Good afternoon. Lord God, I apologize, citizens, it is not from me to order. We do have a call. And now we're recording for business. Uh, Councilwoman Jackson, if you would be so kind as to make an invitation.
Dear and Father, Lord God, we just thank you for being omnipotent and unrepresent. Lord God, we just thank you for being faithful and trustworthy. Lord God, we just thank you for being kind and just. We thank you for being loving. Lord God, we just thank you for being King of kings and Lord of lords. We thank you that you are the great name, that you have called us as your beloved. Lord God, we give honor to you this evening. We take time to praise your holy and righteous name. Lord God, we ask right now in the name of Jesus that you will settle anything that is unlike you. Lord God, decrease us, that you may increase inside of us. That your spirit and your spirit alone will reign in us and through us to accomplish your will, Lord God. Lord, we speak of the oracles of God and we declare what you have declared over your city, that we are bringing light. Lord God, we thank you that you have chosen us as the apple of your eye. Lord God, right now in the name of Jesus, we just pray for each and every councilwoman present, each and every citizen present, and we pray for our community as a whole, Lord God. We thank you that you have never left us and you will never forsake us. Lord God, we give you glory and honor and we just thank you that this meeting is yours, the government is on your shoulders, and you have called us for such a time as this. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Good man. Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Those fans are pleasured today.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in its name, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, I have a question.
President Bowie, Councilwoman Bolin, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson,
Present.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw, Councilwoman Thomas,
Present.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Okay, as stated before, we do have a call. The cabinetary of the Northwest District Council today. Making wise use of what others might overlook for this, uh... Uh, Councilmembers, you have a call for you to January 8th agenda. Uh, I'm going to, um, add financial accountability back to the agenda. Uh, that was Councilwoman, um, Jackson, I had. So we're gonna add that back to, uh, the agenda. Are there any other corrections, additions? Any other corrections?
Yes, sir. I have a copy. You gave her a copy, I think, thank you. There was two percent of that.
Oh, we just gonna, uh, table that. At this time, the chair will entertain the motion to approve the regular January 8th agenda. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johnson. If I can, Councilmember Schor. Any further questions, discussion? Lord God, I have a question.
President Bowie.
Present. I thank you. Yes.
Councilwoman Bolin, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson,
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw,
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas,
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, the regular agenda was approved and out. All Councilmembers present. Councilmembers, you have a call for you to leave some eleven, twenty, eighteen minutes. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move forward with the adoption of the leave some eleven, twenty, eighteen minutes by Councilwoman LaShaw.
Correct.
Of a second, Councilwoman Johnson. Any further discussions, questions? Lord God, I have a question.
President Bowie,
Yes.
Councilwoman Bolin, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson,
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw,
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas,
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Schor, that's about the present agenda items, the two at the back. Um, we will definitely table the agenda list. That's present item number two. And we're gonna discuss present item number one, uh, of financial accountability. Also, Councilmembers, we're just, we're just going into executive session tonight for about twenty minutes to discuss legal matters. Uh, now to the citizens' request. Mr. Garrett Chappell. Mr. Chappell.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Chappell is not here. I saw on the agenda, he was gonna be speaking about a topic that is way ahead of all of us.
Yes, sir.
That is potholes. Don't know what Mr. Chappell commencement want to be, but I would imagine we need to do something about these potholes. So, um, it is ironic, but in our work session last night, we did bring up the subject and we did talk about some remedies. And let's not be fooled, come on.
Definitely. Councilwoman Johnson, would you like to... Yeah, 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 I was, um, I told Mr. President I would like for the gentleman that, um, I guess make the, this act. Uh, how you pronounce that?
Aquafall.
Aquafall, uh, the stuff that building up the potholes, it really work. I think we all need to be there and give a demonstration. I think in three years ago, four years ago, when we did watch it, uh, it was, I think it was something that I think we all need to watch. We also need to have our new, uh, public work crew there as well. It's also, we need to see it's the price, what kind of money we talking about. Because they might done, went up two times than what we paid before, you know? So I think next week, we really need to have, have a, um, to meet with this young man and let him show us how this stuff work. And then, and we can go from there. So I, I know there's something we wanna do, we get it done, get started next week, but we need to try to get with him, might be minor tunes next week. And let's move for, uh, this week, we get to move forward with this.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, trying with the gentleman who brought this material to the attention of the city. And I'm just trying to find out just what happened. Uh, did they install it after we purchased it, or what?
No, we didn't purchase it. They came in and showed, gave us example how it work, how it open. And I'll say, they did a record, uh, below Saint Randolph's house, Council Randolph. Uh, and the bomb, I'm just thinking it's still there. And then, and that came up. And you can also put this stuff in the white way. And it, it, when you put it in, it's very safe.
I guess my question still remains, if we purchased the material, will they also put it down?
No, no, no. They just said, we have to put it down ourselves. But what they did, they came to give us a demonstration of how it work. And, and I would love all of us. I think it just me, President Bowie, Sam, the county officials there, and so, and Mary Evans, uh, and, um, uh, uh, Tom, Tom, Tom Smith. And Dr. Williams.
So what we need to find out from, uh, Mr. Henrys, if we move forward with this aquafall, if we all agree that we will pull out all this money to take care of these potholes that has taken over our city, then we need to find out whether or not the city has the manpower to put this material down. Of course, if they don't, then we can move to contracting it out.
Right.
But I would rather for us not to utilize contracting out money if the city manpower is available to put this aquafall down.
And it's not hard at all. It does not get hard. That's why I would love all of us, that even the community wanna come and seek it themselves. We need to meet with this guy, let him look at it. Let us see what he doing, how he doing it. And let's try to move forward with it, you know? So, 'cause it really, it works. It's expensive, but it works.
I think also too, Councilwoman Johnson, to follow up with what you was, um, talking about, I think, um, Mr. Smith on the tab, he was the public works director. Uh, some of, he allowed some of the guys to go through some of the neighborhood to put it down.
Right.
So we may have to work about outsourcing, uh, on Mr. Smith's team. But I think it's very important that we approve Mr. Henrys in this, in this office.
I agree.
Any other questions? All right, to the mayor's report. Anyone want to hear something? Uh, Councilmembers, I know we supposed to be going to executive session, but I was waiting on, uh, Mr. Peak, which not here yet. But, uh, let's go ahead and move to the business items. Um, I'll tell you, you may be running a little bit behind, but as soon as he come in, we will, uh, make sure we move forward to the executive session. To the business items, uh, business items number one, uh, which was placed back on the agenda. Financial accountability, Councilwoman Jackson.
As I stated to the Councilwoman last evening, um, I spoke with some CPAs and making a motion to authorize a local group of CPAs here afternoon, CPAs of Selma to review our financial records and provide a report in their recommendations to the council.
Okay, that's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I got a little bit.
Hello, do we have a second?
I said.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, uh, by Councilwoman Jackson, second, by Councilwoman Thomas. Now open for discussion. Councilwoman Schor.
Mr. President, I, I do know that our work session, this issue was brought up. And maybe I just assumed too much when the point was made that there would be, uh, some anonymous CPAs, uh, that don't want their names on the surface. I was just under the assumption that they was talking about to the public. Uh, was not under the understanding that this council would not be privileged to who those people are. And of course, if the council not gonna know who these people are, then I'm not gonna support this proposition. So I just wanna make that clear.
Okay, all right. Any other? Councilwoman?
I'm sorry. I had same assumption. We, the council can't know who these people are? Is that right?
The president is aware of who these people are. However, they do have local businesses. And they do not want to be in the scrutiny of the politics that are involved in the city. They, they're not, um, wanting to take sides. They're donating their time. We're not asking them to look over records that are not available to the public. We're not asking them to look over text documents and, and, and information that, um, is private. We're asking them to look over the same documentation that we received, um, on November the first, that some of you all have reviewed, some have not, and to give us information, uh, because they're certified, because they, they understand, they have a different dynamic of understanding, a level of understanding. And so that's all that we're asking them to do is give us their idea, their professional opinion on where we are and where, where we need cut spending, where we need to increase, just where we are. As you all are aware, we have not gotten any of this information. We've asked for cost analysis from the laid off employees. We've asked for financial analysis for the first quarter. We have not received any of this information. And I don't know anyone here that professes to be a CPA or that have that certification. And so for them to come to the president and, and speak to the public president and have a representative to speak to myself and say, "I haven't spoken with the CPAs." I've spoken with the representative for them saying, "We don't wanna be involved in the politics. We're not choosing sides. We want to help our beloved city. We want to put you all in a position that you have information that you're saying on the radio, week after week, day after day, that you're not able to obtain. Allow us to help you." And so if it's the consent of the council not to be helped, then I will pass the information that I receive, um, from the league and others that is open to the public. I will give this information to those individuals and any others and ask them to assist us. But as a council, I would like for us to move in one motion, at one time, saying, "Our, our desire is to understand our finances. Our desire is to move forward into progress and it is our desire to allow the people of Selma to assist us in that matter."
All right, Councilwoman Benjamin, Councilwoman Schor, second time.
Uh, I don't think the council is saying they don't wanna help. The council is saying they want to know who these people are. Um, yes, y'all know yesterday I was for this, but I was under the assumption, uh, that the council would know who these people are. Um, so no, we're not saying we're turning down help. We're saying we want to know who it is that's helping us. Who, who are these people? And if it's only, uh, public information, you're correct. It could just be handed over to them. You, you, you're very, very correct because they're not gonna be able to get anything down there that we can't get, uh, down there already.
Councilwoman Schor.
Well, I think my colleague asked a break bait on what I was about to say. And I don't want the public, uh, professional CPAs that's offering service to know or to think that we're rejecting their services. But I just find it hard, I know what I do, for some council members to know some business of the city and some council member don't. It just don't stand good for me. So on those basis, I have a problem with the help. I have a problem with being, uh, the CPA having anonymity about who they are. And I do have a problem with this council not knowing who these people are.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Yes, um, Mr. President, you know exactly who they are. Um, I do say that I work in a field that requires strict confidence. And I believe in it. Um, confidentiality is something that's extremely important. And I'm not sure that all of feel the same. And so rather than put them in a position that their name or business may be impacted by their good hearts to serve our community in this capacity, I remove the motion from the floor.
All right. Also too, um, Councilwoman Jackson, uh, let me, let me thank you. But this is not our first vote you've had trying to, uh, count in. I would probably try and grind on it over a year ago to help with this endeavor. Uh, but what I can do is, with some of the, um, accounts, definitely go back to see, um, talk with the individuals who brought me the names of the account to see whether it be okay with the council that maybe it should be with the council to just put that out there to see, uh, whether we would, uh, we would the council to move forward with that. But at this point in time, you would draw, move through the motion, but I would definitely follow up on this.
I give Councilwoman Thomas to tell us what she's enjoying as a...
Sure, I, I, Councilwoman Thomas, you just need to withdraw the motion. Yes, sir.
Second.
Withdraw.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman.
And finally, Mr. President, we need to have that conversation with the CPAs. Um, you will probably let us know before a meeting like this one. And certainly, uh, I'm on board, if you can get them to, uh, do that, I'm on board.
All right. Um, Councilwoman Benjamin, business items on the floor.
Uh, I guess I should have taken this off of that's not you are going to meet concerning an update concerning the employee layoff, right, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
And...
I just saw a cost analysis to see how much of savings, uh, due to the layoff. And also, like I mentioned, I have tonight, October to January is the cash cap for the city of Selma. We possibly looking at labor area tax coming in, sales tax, franchise tax, and also business taxes at the end of January. So I would definitely follow that up with this matter. Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Johnson.
Good. Could you look and see if we can get a few employees to start again, especially our secretary? We really need her to help us with some, um, uh, some requests that the citizens calling us on. Uh, we need to get some requests put in, um, uh, but we could get a few started. Like, like I said, this is time for somebody to come in. That if it's enough on, that we can keep them and maintain them. If you could at least look into that too.
Because keep in mind, Councilmembers, uh, the six day unemployment work, I mean, layoff rather, uh, you still have to pay them unemployment insurance.
Right.
And keep in mind, we're on a budget for $207,000. And I think on the average, we live in, you know, four, four hundred and something. So, uh, I'm not a genius in math, but I, I was pretty good and greater than the best of us. Uh, but just see how it works.
Yeah.
If you also was doing that in your inquiry, find out how much of that savings went toward reducing our debt as a 1.5 million. Uh, when you have businesses that is rejecting our PO, that, that don't look it, that almost handicapped the city of business. We all, we all realize, man, all the six day people would resolve, would resolve as some savings, but on the other hand, you still got costs. So find out how much of that saving went toward reducing that 1.5 million debt.
All right, Councilwoman.
Yes, I just heard what, uh, Councilwoman Johnson just said about the, the work orders. Um, my understanding this, I would like for you to find out from me, um, public work service. Public work service is operating on a day to day, everyday operation. And like you said, work orders. In the past, we have, before the year of 2018 went out, we had work orders in the place that was supposed to been carried out, which have, have came to a standingstill. And I understand that you, we all want, uh, our, our workers back. We want all of them back to work. But we have a day to day operation where we are paying public work, workers out here now. When it comes to the day to day operation, where we have five trucks that, that are running, supposed to be running in the city of Selma. There's no reason that no trash or anything should be in the, in the community out of these eight ward. Um, you could call the public work office. I understand you're saying we need these people back. We do, which we have some. We don't even know the total of public work people that are out here working on a day to day operation. Because some of our day to day operation that we put work orders in have not been carried out, or have came to a stop. So my thing is this here that I wanted to say as a leader. Uh, the city with the day to day operation have been shut down. Some of our council people, some of us are doing our duty to try to keep things going, to keep our community clean and safe. And, um, I have a problem when we are paying, uh, citizen, taxpayers are paying to day to day operation and in some areas that we can't get done. Uh, work that's been on this, and we have work that's piled up. Um, I would like for you to find out with public work, because when you go out there yourself, the office is locked down. You have no secretary there. And you don't get communication from your department here. And I would like you to find out, how many ground, uh, public work workers are, besides the truck? The ones that are driving the truck? Because I have something that's, that's bugging me and it makes my community look bad. When you make my community look bad, with garbage, when we got five garbage truck running. And, uh, I came last week and they asked them to remove it. And we got five trucks. And what's on lot of deal? If we got five trucks, my neighborhood shouldn't be looking like that. And I came down here, uh, asked for a request for the truck to go out and pick it up last week. And today is Tuesday, and it's still there. So can you find out?
Yes, ma'am. Can I add to this?
Yes, sir. Councilwoman. When she asked, can you check if this, the six day happened broke down with the department they get from? Yeah, you know, that's...
Organized.
Right, with, right, right. Well, it's, it's, it's twenty from the public work, you know, have a breakdown, boss, wait.
Yes, sir.
As chairman of the Public Works and Public Services Committee, I hear you, Van Ness. I will visit out there if I, to ascertain exactly what is the strength and the manpower of the Public Works and Public Services. And I will bring back a report to this council.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Also too, uh, councilmembers, we need to remind the, uh, community, and I hope James could help me look this. Um, when, when you're riding throughout the city, you see a lot of sofas and, um, mattresses and furniture, uh, to remind the citizens that we would not pick that up.
That's right.
And, you know, next few months, um, I have a strong feeling that a lot more would be throughout the city. So, James, if you could help me with that. We have a ordinance that, um, we would not pick it up.
Toilets.
Toilets, too.
That's right, not only the toilet. And eventually, I'd increase to another one.
Yeah. Okay, before we go to executive session, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, Councilwoman, you wanna bring on, talk about Dallas Academy building? Or do you wanna wait until the second session?
I will, if, if the, I will give a report after the session. That's, that's what you do.
At this time, councilmembers, we need to go into a second session for about twenty minutes to talk about legal matters. And we will resume that here in about twenty minutes. Do I have a motion to go into a second session?
So, so.
Lord God, I have a question.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bolin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Council members, we're about to reconvene in our regular council session. We'll have a motion till we convene.
So will Mr. President.
Motion by Councilwoman Benjamin Second for Grochoff.
President Wood. Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yonka. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman Shore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, we're back in session. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we contract with Attorney Bobby Segal to provide legal representation to the council as needed.
Do it on the second.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Benjamin. Any follow-up discussion, comments? Grochoff.
President Wood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yonka. Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph. Councilwoman Shore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, all right, a motion. All right, now back to the business arguments. Councilwoman Thomas, Dallas Academy Building.
I received some additional information about the Dallas County Academy Building. I will continue to stay on and follow up the information on about getting this done. And I'll be talking to you at the next meeting about it.
Standing, Council.
Yes.
All right, we have last on the agenda for business items, Citizens Review Board. We're gonna move right along with the President Bowie returns. That's his business item. We're gonna go into standing committee reports. And we're gonna begin with recreation. Councilman Johnson.
I don't have a report, but I did a request of Councilwoman Benjamin on tennis court at City Hall.
All right.
I did get an opportunity to talk to Terry Jackson. And he did say he would look into it. I asked him about his situation, how to stay. And thanks to Councilwoman Bowlin and your crew, the volunteers, the donation, the things that he did. That's awesome. Appreciate the people that did that. So I'm not sure, we may get some help from this. But I told Terry to go ahead and see what your cost would be. And we can get some volunteers to help toward that. We're not interested what we have to pay to get the resurface along with the net and whatever else needs to be done into that property. And I'll tell them to check all the areas and see what we need to move forward with it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that's the only thing I have with now, the recreation.
Mr. President, we are now on your business item, Citizens Review Board. We wanted to move along with the...
I can't remember.
Okay, going to administration.
You want me to close the floor?
Oh, yeah.
I just want to say Happy New Year to everybody. I just want to pray that this should be a lot better than it has been. I want to say hello to my minister, good friend, brother, Bill Strong. Because he, I really appreciate you, Mr. Strong, because you do want us council people to work together. And that is my goal, hope and pray that we all up here be able to get along, to be able to work together to make Salem a better place to be. And our council, we in a whole, but I feel stronger that we will be getting out this hole with the help of yourself and the rest of the community that want us to work together. And I want to thank each and every one of you all for being here. But I just hope and pray we here with a positive attitude, not a negative. And I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you all to make Salem a better place to be. And thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Councilman Johnson. Administration call, both councilmen call.
No report. I guess we're gonna move forward with determining the judicial side and those kind of things, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So I was waiting for that to be assigned, so we can go ahead and move forward with that. And then review the documentation that Mr. Hadley brought to us regarding the request for information. So, which really, if you're doing things the right way, you shouldn't worry about what the request for information is about because you have no fault in it, because you've done everything correctly to the best of your ability. So again, it seems like we have something to hide when we have such a laborious process to get through there. So I'm fine with doing that, we'll go to the committee just to make sure everyone's on board with that. That's it for administrative. Those are remarks. You know, it's time for us to do what we gotta do to move forward, get the city... Uh, that's it for administrative. Those are remarks. Uh, you know, it's time for us to do what we gotta do to move forward, get the city to move forward against the definition, uh, in what's going on here, in order to move forward. Again, we come and convene at this meeting, and we sit here and we talk, and talk, and talk, and talk, and talk, and nothing changes. That's frustrating for me, I know it's frustrating for everybody out there, as you, you know, drive home and slam into a pothole on the way home, and you've already called or requested to get repaired. Uh, I, I made a statement at the back of the executive session, I don't mind sharing, uh, that I'm gonna move forward independently of the city as best possible to try to get these holes filled with crush and run, or rip wrap, and then we can get to, to, you know, trying to move forward. I think most of the other councilors are probably in, in agreement with that, because we are suffering intense liability issues as a result of not getting these holes filled in a proper fashion, and it continues to expose our city to unnecessary expenses, and, and traumatize our citizens. Again, what's going on here, while we see everything, is, is much psychological as it is economical. Uh, and that's where the warfare has to be fought, uh, not just in the trash and the things we see and what we can pick up and what we can change, but also maintaining a positive outlook to, uh, Councilman Johnson's perspective. Being positive and, and understanding that we are working through this, and, and all these people here, all the folks that listen, uh, which I guess we're not even on the radio anymore, are we?
No.
Uh, that's been vetoed, I understand?
Yeah.
Uh, so unfortunately, they don't hear us, and they, they may not see us, except for, for Mr. Blackman there. Thank you, sir. But, uh...
And the media in the back.
We, and the media in the back. We've gotta continue to, uh, press forward and be realistic and be positive, and look at how we can affect change, and not just systemically push forward the negative that's been out there. And that, and that's what people want to have happen. They want us to turn on our city and start devouring ourselves and eat our, our young, if you will. I refuse to let that happen on myself. I had to sit down and, and pray, and, and, and ask the Lord to give me direction, ask Him to remove these things from my heart, and, uh, and to give me clarity, and, and help provide clarity, so I can move forward and not be negative myself, because it does get so overwhelming to talk to all the good citizens out there and to continue to hear the problems. And again, we're all aware of those problems, and we want to affect change and we want to see it changed, but we, right now, are just limited in what we can do, and, and that's something, hopefully, that the vote tonight will allow us a mechanism to find some clarity and all that. So, again, thank you for all your patience. One, one, thank you for representing you, and continue to be patient with us a little longer as we push toward, hopefully, a better 2019. And again, I second what, uh, Councilman Johnson said about working together, that we could put away the trials and tribulations of the past and figure out some way to come together. For the best of all reasons, that's for the citizens of this community. So, thank you, and please keep us in your prayers, as I pray for all of you and all the citizens in this community, and for all of us that are elected, uh, that hopefully one day this thing will turn around, and the good Lord will bless us with the necessary insight to start making the right decisions and quit making the wrong decisions.
Thank you, Councilman Bowley. Public safety, President Bowie.
Thank you. Uh, council members, see that in front of me, I passed out some information on my fire chief. Uh, Chief Stevenson has been requesting this information for over a year. Uh, you know, we talked about Chief Stevenson hiring three new fire investigators. The council did pass that over a year ago. Uh, and, uh, for some reason, uh, it's questioning, I guess, you know, uh, the executive press said they don't have to pass, um, one fire investigator. But I think this would be worthwhile, because the money's already available. Uh, you're looking at, he have some slots that he can just pay a difference of the three fire investigators as well. Also, he asked for, to create nine positions of firefighters part-time, because one of the things that we're looking at to add to insurance is the fatigue factor. Uh, currently, we're now to twenty-three firefighters now. Twenty-three. So, we definitely need to, uh, do what we need to, uh, to at least have these part-time firefighters with no benefits, because they're currently working at other fire departments. And the three recommendations, four recommendations that, um, Chief, for this memo, I'm asking the council if they would move forward, uh, with their, with their vote, because Chief Stevenson have been before us, I know at least four or five times, asking for this request. And we aren't talking about public safety, but also the fire department is part of public safety. And I think we have one of the best chiefs in the nation, and I want to commend him for the work that he's doing, and also the novel approach that he's given to men within the fire department. So with that, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we move forward with the, uh, three recommendations on this memo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Four, excuse me, four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any follow-up discussion? Councilwoman Jackson.
Okay. Um, I guess the first thing I wanted to discuss, I see here that you said the, uh, recommendation number one said no dollar increase to budget. Uh, but you also stated that these items were included in the budget, or all of them? So...
Well, basically, uh, part of the three firefighters, uh, the vacant positions, he's just gonna use two or three vacant positions for, uh, for the five investigators. That's not currently high, but that's the same format we use within the police department.
Okay. And, and, and I under- understand that, um, however, you're also trying to increase the number of firemen, correct, because we have manpower shortage?
Yeah, but see, when you're looking at the retention rate, number one, then you're looking at the pay rate, I started to pay for a firefighter, it's nine, she's a, at surrounding areas, it's twelve dollars and sixty exchange. So, with the part-time, hopefully, we can offset, you know, um, the fatigue factor, and hopefully, uh, with the chief, uh, recruitment to give new fires to join the seven fire department.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm asking with this, the three new fire investigators, um, and that's what I'm on, the recommendation number one, we're moving money, uh, from positions that are currently not filled.
Yes, ma'am.
But, that we need.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we, we haven't had an opportunity to look at, uh, our budget. I believe that we should be moving in the direction for the fire department. There's not a freeze on any public safety, so we don't, I don't believe we even have to vote to do any hiring, because there's not a freeze for public safety. Um, there's not a freeze on overtime for public safety. But if we're looking at promoting or moving funding for, to increase their salaries when we need additional bodies right now, I'm just not in a position that I wanna do that, because we don't have any financial information, and to keep expanding without understanding the income and expenses, and really understanding the budget. Of course, you recall, the, the mayor's narrative is that our budget was, um, overly, um, or underly, um, was not filled or not, uh, proportion, under proportion for what we actually need. So, I'm not in, in, in a place where I can vote on changing any dollar amounts, but public safety three and four, public safety has not been, uh, put on, there's not a freeze on the funding for that or hiring or overtime.
Okay. Well, I think we have, uh, can't recall, I don't have a budget in front of me, but I think roughly about fifty to sixty slots for a fire. I, I forgot if you're on the gag order, so you can't tell.
Yeah.
But I think it's about fifty to sixty slots or there.
So, do we, do we, okay, so we've, we've gone from one, and I guess this is, this is, this is my, this is what I wanna know. We've gone from not having any fire investigators, not having any fire investigators, and I, I don't mind looking at doing an increase for continuing education and bettering yourself and getting more merits. Uh, but we don't have one currently. We have a state marshal that lives here in Dallas County, and then we're gonna go to having three. Uh, a city of our size, I would think that if we're going to move in this direction, and I think it's very progressive, um, that he's thought to do this, that we, we should do it in a rollout manner. Uh, we should, we should, um, try this and not do so many at one time. This is a large increase, and though we have a, a number of positions that maybe fill, we need to look at budgeting for what we have, and not using it as a fund to say, well, we got fifty positions, we only have twenty-three, so we got twenty-five, so we'll just give everybody, um, promote them in this way and give them this money. We need a budget, and have a more realistic budget, so we can actually know where our expenditure and expenses are, and then give us some type of financial analysis of where we are. Those are just my thoughts.
Okay, first off, they have already gone through the school. They graduate on November twenty-nine.
I realize, November twenty-nine, I realize they've not voted, that, that they have this continuing education. I believe in continuing education. However, what I'm saying is, I do not know that a city the size of Selma needs three investigators. The state does not have three investigators in, in one city, uh, one county. That, um, I mean, I think our state investigator may have several counties. Uh, and so, I, I just don't think that under our financial strengths, that we have more money than the state of Alabama.
Okay, thank you. We are, Councilwoman Benjamin, then Councilwoman Shaw.
Mr. President, I was under the impression that number one was, the vote for number one was ceremonial, because I thought we already voted for this, and then we have...
I just wanted to...
We can just, it's, it's ceremonial, 'cause we can simply just refer back to the minutes, I, I thought we had already approved it. I wish the chief could at least nod his head, yes or no, but I guess he cannot, um...
Can you find, can you find, uh, something?
I'm still speaking.
Smoke signals, something. Um, and so...
No smoke signals, it's a fire.
I thought we had already voted for these investigators, and that these investigators are still multi-purpose. They will serve more than the purpose of, uh, fire investigator, uh...
Interesting.
All those things that you, uh, laid out in the work session on yesterday.
They're certified, eight posts certified.
Eight posts.
And they're eight posts certified.
And they may, they can help with the code enforcement too, by, by eight posts certified, and also with the carry gun, so I'm looking at the bigger picture and not just the...
Yeah, you can reposition a couple different departments in the city.
You can save money.
Fire department takes those over, and we're getting more out of them, and saving money to help pay for them.
That was, that was my point, Mr. President.
Hold on. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Shaw, let me...
Just really quickly, I was gonna close with, uh, one, one and two, perhaps we could, uh, perhaps we could take two votes if everyone is not comfortable, and then vote for, uh, three and four. And that's just a suggestion.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Shaw.
Mr. President, the sentiment has been expressed with minds, you know, we had already voted to put these positions in the budget, and I think one primary reason for supporting this is they would be eight posts certified, and particularly using multi- quasi positions. I mean, for whatever the reason, the fact that there's only twenty-three fire, firemen as we speak, and we got like four fire station chief. Are you throwing the number, you have to be... I mean, that's, uh, roughly five, uh, firemen per, per station, and, and of course, uh...
At one time?
At one time. I mean, we are, we are severely understaffed.
And also too, to follow it up, Councilwoman Shaw, with the fire investigator, they can go inside the clubs, count the normal count.
Absolutely.
And, um...
And of course, it, it is, it's such a hard burn about this recommendation.
Thirty-four.
I would be inclined to eliminate two and, uh, move forward on the other three, and of course, we'll come back at a later, later date. Once our finances are stable, we revisit that position, which I think is so richly deserved for the fire chief to have, but at this point, we gotta consider our financial stability at this juncture.
So, what was the motion?
You had a motion, didn't you?
I'm gonna...
Oh, you suggested?
I think, I think you suggested we eliminate section number two.
Okay.
And vote on number three. So, if that's the case, I'll make a motion to, uh, eliminate number two and vote on items one, three, and four.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to move forward with the recommendation from the chief, um, pay rate for job system for three new fire investigators, three free, nine part-time firefighters at a rate of fourteen dollars per hour. And allow, um, offset personnel to work overtime temporarily to help with the manpower shortage, so that new hires can be obtained. Keep in mind also too, there are three different shifts, uh, with the fire department. So, we have three different shifts with four different, five stations, four five, five stations, so we definitely have to keep that in mind. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Shaw. Second, Councilman Johnson. Any follow-up discussion? Rokoff.
President Booth.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yonka, Councilwoman Jackson.
No for number one, yes for number three and four, because that's already in place, but I don't feel that we're, uh, in a position that we can be so tough here at this time without knowing any of our, uh, financial status.
Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Shaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilmembers, for the motion you had. Also, for the finan- for the finance side, we...
Excuse me, let's stand by, say, one second, please. But can you please, uh, uh, help the state committee meet some way? Because we got a lot of fire work going on in Warrick, and I think in council, some of the ward as well, and now we need to have something done, uh, from our state committee.
It will be next, uh, next week. Also, that's why, uh, my business side, Citizens, uh, Review Committee, I'm gonna ask each council member, if they would, to, uh, nominate one, um, citizen from the ward with this Citizens Review Committee. It's basically to help foster a relationship with the community. And after we probably have each resident from the ward, we also need to bring in our social worker in, someone familiar, and, and education, someone from the education field, to help with this process of this crime, because a lot of this crime, you know, it comes around, um, education.
Is this part of the need that we have?
That's gonna be part of the need.
That we talk about?
Yes, sir.
But we definitely, because, but not these guys, you know, control with the guns and stuff, we need some right of way moves, President.
Yeah, I mean, it's a clarinet crack, you know, that's one thing, too, that hurts, uh, economic development in any city, uh, the crime. And that's something that we definitely need to cover, uh, to get ahead of, uh, the, uh, vote. I'm sad to say, uh, last night, we had our first murder. This morning, I'm sorry, this morning, we had our first murder. And, uh, one is one too many, uh, so we definitely need to, uh, come together and move forward with whatever we need to do as a, as a council, and also, uh, with the community, and also our public safety, but most important, we have to put God first.
Thank you, Governor.
I appreciate that. Uh, also, I need to mention the fact that, uh, upon the Finance Committee report, uh, RDS, we have reached RDS on Tuesday at three o'clock in the council chamber. Uh, I did reach out to her last night, and she would be here to talk about, um, taxes, the legal taxes, and also this, so that will be Tuesday, at three o'clock.
All right, can you find out when our contract is up, I don't know.
Okay, definitely will. Uh, I think it's April, but don't hold it to that, but I'll definitely find out more definitely to let you know. All right?
All right, anything else, Mr. President?
That's it.
All right. Public Works and General Services, Councilman Shaw.
Uh, at the next work session, I will bring, uh, as I visit with, uh, Mr. Stephen Hendrick, who is, uh, Public Works Director. Also, Mr. Sean Radby, who's the Golden Age Officer, and many other has to involve. To ascertain the manpower that we have currently, that we'd be able to do some work within our ward that is so badly needed, one is those potholes. Uh, potholes is becoming a nemesis to not only us, but specifically to our citizens. And they're the ones that bear the blood of those potholes, and it's incumbent upon us to get those potholes, because they're some of the things of the past, and we just got to get it done. But when you're, when you're talking about, uh, issues within the city, you know, trash has been a problem, along with garbage. Trash is no longer a problem now. Garbage has been intensified. Look like garbage is getting, uh, more intensified now than at previous months. I don't know if people not paying the garbage bill and they're picking up their containers, but we gotta get a hold on this garbage. Uh, this garbage is beginning to consume our city, and, you know, garbage is more, uh, hazardous than trash. So, we're gonna be asking the citizens, those who don't have a container, and, and this, this, this council needs to determine how we can get our citizens to be more responsible in having a garbage receptacle at, at home, so that, that will be part of minimizing the garbage problem we experience in this city. You know, at this time, I wanna wish, uh, all citizens a Happy New Year, you know. We need to be concerned about the safety that's, uh, lack thereof, that's going on in the city itself. It is so sad, so unfortunate, almost every day, almost every week, you hear about a shooting, uh, letting on and killing. And anytime there's a loss of life, you know, it's, it's a sad thing, and, and, for the family and for the city itself. You know, this sporadic wildfire got to cease its decision. We, we got to let these thugs know that they're not gonna take hold of the city itself.
That's right.
We, I mean, and the only way we got, the only way we gonna do it, y'all, we got to bring about more police officers. We got to do, uh, uh, a better job of recruiting more officers, and of course, we can't do that until we got something to offer them. I stand to tell you, this city still is in the need of revenues. We cannot continue to function on revenues that we've been so accustomed to receiving. After all, we've been receiving for the last four years, diminishing revenue. Revenue has gone up. Only thing that's gone up is our expenses, and we talking about to the level of not paying fifty-two or one point five million dollars of debt that we're, we haven't paid. We don't know if that's gone up, we don't know if it's gone down. And I'm hoping that the sixty-eight people that's been laid off, and with that partly, that resourcing into minimizing the indebtedness, uh, decreasing those deals that are, had been paid, and hopefully getting back businesses to once again being in agreement to receive our POs. It's a sad thing, Selma, when your businesses reject your city's purchase orders because they're not being paid. We need to remedy that, and the only way to remedy that, y'all, we got to bring about some new revenue. And I'm just telling y'all, it's gonna take new revenues, talking ain't gonna resolve. Every city that I hear about in, in Alabama, just raising revenues. You got Montgomery over there raising Alamoa. They raising all counter taxes, so they need money. We can't compare Selma to Montgomery, but Selma needs money just like Montgomery. Selma deserves the, the, the safety of its citizens just like Montgomery, and we can't do that with current revenues. You can sit here, you can pretend you don't wanna do this thing, but we got to get new monies in this city, y'all. And how we do that, it's gonna take this, they're gonna take some... And how we do that is going to take this council, it's going to take some, it's going to take some, some, some backbone, it's going to take some people's courage to move beyond talking. You know, for two years, we came to this council, two nights out of the month, that's all we done is talk. We haven't resolved nothing. And I'm tired of talking, but it's going to take money to bring about some resolve in the city itself. It's going to take some revenue, y'all. You, you don't want to hear it, but it's, it's, it's going to take revenue to bring about a change in this city. And you ain't going to be able to do it with current resources, it ain't going to happen. You continue to do the same thing expecting a, a different result, that's lunacy, that's craziness, it ain't going to happen.
Let's have a guy here.
Let, let, let's, that councilman, Michelle finish, he has the floor. Close your remarks, councilman, or are you done?
And I think for that.
Your work.
And, and there's no disrespect by my colleagues.
I was great with this, you didn't say councilman.
I just want the public to know there's no disrespect. He is, you know, he's, he's passionate about his position as we all are. And of course, nobody, nobody wants to give out new revenue, but it's a fact, nothing's going to change until we get new revenue. Nothing's going to change until there's benefits and ways and means of recuperating what is owed to the city. And of course, our tax base is one of them, we got a problem with that, we need to fix it. That's why we need an RDS. Hopefully after that, we have an RDS, we're going to be able to do a better job of getting those taxes that the businesses have collected and they're going to deliver that to the city. But in the between time, we got to put our heads together, we got to think outside the box, we got to figure out how we're going to move beyond this travesty that we've been experiencing. And the only way it's going to be done is with new revenue. That being said, take that home, partner, let that marinade with you because nothing will change until we get new revenue.
Thank you, councilman Michelle. Children and families, councilwoman Jackson.
There's a little recorded this time. Um, however, in closing remarks, I would like to say that I've had the opportunity to speak with a couple of businesses here in Selma, uh, that are refusing to take, um, any more of our services or maybe work for the city of Selma that, um, has asked, uh, has been promised to be paid. Uh, and so they're, they're not willing to say much, but to the tune of, of over a hundred thousand dollars. When I say over, I'm saying well over. Um, I'm not saying the exact amount because I don't want, um, anyone in the financial, finance department or anyone else to be punished because they're, um, letting the council know or the businesses are making council members aware, um, just, um, where they are and what they're willing to do with city government at this time and in this place. Um, if I recall, the mayor said something, uh, several months ago, um, cannot be verified. Um, but he stated that we were in arrears to the tune of half a million dollars. Does anyone recall that, that statement, that we had fees or?
He gave us a fee.
So, I, I, I got, I understand.
One point five million dollars in debt.
Yeah, and so, um, in saying that, we now begin to get money into, um, our coffers. And what, what is the first thing that we did? We begin, begin to spend because now this is the cash season, this is the cash count. What it is, is for us, a time for us to pay those businesses that have continued to work with us, that has allowed our invoices and our POs to, to be held off several months to pay them. What it is, is a time for us to do an analysis, to see how much we really save, if we save anything, uh, or if we will save anything in the long run. Uh, or we're going to continue to expend money on, on the backs of our employees and our services, um, to the city of Selma. It is the time to do a financial overhaul. It is not the time to continue spending. It's not the, the time to tout the mayor's narrative, it's the time to get in there and look at the information and determine just where we are so we can make sound financial decisions. What we need, just as much as finances, is transparent leadership without. The citizens have a right, this council has a right to know the financial status of the city. The fact that we cannot go to the finance department and obtain the information, the fact that our emails are being overlooked, I know all of you alls are, I know all of mine's are. Uh, the fact that we can't get employees' names, their positions, things of that such, that should not be, that should not be. Those, those are problems that should not even exist. Those are things that should not be happening in a government, for the people, by the people. And so what, what I would hope and ask, I'm going to go back again with those, um, CPAs, ask if they could have one name for the entire group release. I've already began an MOU. If they say no, I'll beg and plead and give them the information, but I want them to give us something, guys. I feel like most of you are, and I'm just going to tell you, in my job every day in drill court, Judge Sean would have fired me by now. He will not let you speak over five minutes if you don't have a solution. It just doesn't happen. And, and I'm not used to coming in here and feeling the weight and the pressure and the enormity of our issues and not having any way of resolving it. That it was a great vote that we did on this evening, I have an attorney secret to begin representing us on legal matters. And hopefully, he can help us navigate these waters so we can begin receiving the financial data that is owed to us, that is in our authority to have and that is our duty. We're negligent in our own duties if we cannot tell the citizens where we are financially. But he's held us hostage. What he's done is say, I'm not allowing you all to have it and we want to be respectful. But at this time, in this season, at, at this stage, it is, it has gone too far. And I not only, don't pray for, don't pray for Selma, pray with Selma. Because believe that each and every one of these council members have the city of Selma at their heart. We may differ on the way to get it done, but it is in our heart. You don't get up here and put yourself through this type of scrutiny not to have a heart and a desire to make this city better. And so I pledge to go back because I, I realized when I, when I was first hit with it, because I left early, but my topic was already off on the work session yesterday, I mean, you all know my brother lost his mother. And so I was called out of the meeting on yesterday, but I would have liked to discuss those at that time, rather than telling them, hey, begin the MOU because we've gotten this, this appears to be, there was a great response to it. But that's nevertheless, January the twenty-second, what I will do is I will speak with them, I will come back. And if we can have one representative to say, I will speak up to the CPAs of Selma that I represent them and that, that I will bring information to this council. I want you all to be just as aware, but I, at the end of the day, we need information. You, you all be blessed, love your, your children. My, my brother told me yesterday, he said, nothing prepared me for this. And I know, um, councilwoman Benjamin knows, he said, nothing prepared me for this, sis. He said, go home and help your mom. And my mom was over there because we were going to watch the game, you know, and I ran in the house and I hugged her so tight and she said, what is all this about? And I said, I didn't know, that's all I was saying. Thank you all.
All right.
Number two, councilman.
So that makes two of you all who will be contacting the CPAs about the same matter. Mr. President, uh, councilwoman Jackson, I'm assuming y'all going to work that out and how y'all going to work together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because like I said, uh, hopefully that over a year, we'll probably, uh, account here. That's hopefully the move for this, with this, uh, MOU, so we can go on and resolve these matters.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, councilman Michelle, I should let you do both of yours at the same time. Um, Selma Dallas, you have the ambassador. Any remarks?
I'll record at this point, we're still going to begin with our youth, bring about some activities and, you know, before.
Okay, thank you, sir. Public Buildings, councilwoman Janie Thomas.
Um, I'd like to say to the citizens that are present here, um, there's a lot of things going on with public building. And, uh, there's some other things that I will be addressing later on, that people have been calling me about and, and some things that I have looked at. Uh, I just want, uh, the Dallas Academy, the people to know that, uh, we're not at a standstill, we're moving forward on this here. And I hope to have more answers for you. Also, I want to say to this council, to this town, that in this building right now, in our IT room, I don't know back here when you did the bond, uh, back here some years, I wasn't a part, but I remember. Um, it was some work done to, to this, uh, to the building. In our IT room right now, uh, uh, the window panes, uh, they're, they're falling out. Uh, when the bad weather rains, you know, you have all that electronic with those, uh, computerized machines back there. Uh, I know we at a standstill where we don't have, uh, the, uh, we haven't seen in finance where fun is where we can go in. And, uh, councilman Benjamin, you can check it out too, uh, the windows.
What would you like me to check out?
Uh, Susan, we can, you know, where all the, the electronic is over there in the second room to the window over here in the building where all the electronic, the computerized at, the window panes have fallen out. Oh, well, in the building, we ain't here.
So our IT department.
In the IT department. Uh, we have the windows that have fallen out. And, uh, they had a young man that come in and bolted, bolted up, but, uh, there's some things that we need to, to do, uh, and be, be good or better by next time when we have contractors come out to do work. Cause she, it was told me that we had been a bond where so much money had came out to be repaired here in, in, uh, in the city hall. And now, most of those windows are not, they're falling out. And you don't want the electronic to work on it, see what can we do for that?
Yes, ma'am.
And also, I want to say to, um, councilman Michelle made, uh, spoke of something about, uh, about the garbage. As leaders in our community, we live, as a leader, we have to get our own self out in the community. And, uh, some of these places that, uh, that put this, they're putting garbage out, every person that's able to be qualified to exempt should have a trash can this year because the deadline is December thirty-first. And, uh, also some of our landlords that, uh, that we've been having with these houses in our community that, uh, they're paying taxes on, they're dumping garbage into these houses. And, uh, they're not being bolted up or anything and we just need that to get cleaned out in our community too. And, uh, if we work together and hit ground and go out in the community and talk to our people to see what the areas where we have garbage dumped at, we can do a little bit better. And that's what I focus on for twenty twenty, to work with cleanliness and the beautification of our community where we live in. Public safety, the, I hear the cries, I hear from the citizen in my ward, I don't know about nobody else. But I, I hear, uh, my constituents calling me, uh, wanting to know when we're going to have a public safety meeting. It's my duty to get them there, it's my duty to go out in the community when, councilman Booish say that day, that represent ward seven, that where we have this crime, where we have this murder, where we have these homes are being, we, now we beginning to have abandoned houses set afire. Uh, people get mad and go burn somebody's house down, we got this going on now. So my thing is this here, uh, is as a leader, my duty is to get our community. Once we get our community, we all are eight, we got eight wards. And it's our duty, if we say we are, uh, public safety meetings should be packed. Cause all wards have had gun fires, murders, and they continue. So it takes the, it takes the people that live in our community to come out and, and, and let's hear from our police chief. Let's hear from our mayor, let's hear from somebody that's running this city, that, that, the parents and the children, they, they crying out. So it's, it's our duty to try to save our community. So I'm hoping that the next, uh, city council, uh, next, uh, war, uh, were the next, uh, public safety meeting, that we would have a great turnout. Because every weekend or every other night, we get, we have a gun, gun fire, or somebody's house being burned down. And I know the, the, the few people we have now, they're afraid. And we got, it's up to us to bring them back their fear out of them, to save what, what we got in our community. So I'm going to say, good night.
Thank you, councilwoman Thomas. And, uh, we have the educational committee, I have no report, I want to say thank you to, uh, Mr. David Blackman for recording. Thank you to, uh, Mr. James Thomas, the general sales manager at thirteen hundred WTLS, uh, one oh six point five, Tavistee, Alabama. Uh, you can find him on the internet at thirteen hundred WTLS dot com. He's not in the room, I wanted to also, uh, see where else we could find him, but he'll, maybe he'll be in soon. Wanted to remind the public, um, Jimmy L. None, as judge of probate, Dallas County, Alabama, will have a ceremony Saturday, January, this coming Saturday, January twelfth at three o'clock PM at George Wallace Community College. This is his swearing in, okay? This is his swearing in ceremony. So just to remind you all that everyone is invited to attend and witness this historical moment. That is the official invitation to all of you, to the citizens and to the council as a reminder. Um, let me just say to the council, thank you all for a wonderful work session on yesterday. And by wonderful, I mean that, uh, the atmosphere was a little different on yesterday. The tone was different on yesterday, the tone was different on today. We, uh, disagreed on matters, we stated those disagreements and we moved on. And so thank you all for that, let's continue that all in twenty nineteen so that we can continue all of the business of the city of Selma. Uh, that business being finance, that business being, um, that business being our sixty-eight employees, that business being quality of life, that business being paying our bills, uh, to those that we owe, to the business of Selma. And so thank you all for the meeting on yesterday and the meeting on today. And before we adjourn, I know councilman Michelle has his hand.
I had meant to mention, speaking of garbage, on the twenty-first of this month, which is the day of the observance of Father Martin Luther King's birthday, the state of Alabama and the nation observed his birth on the twenty-first of January. There would be a group of Auburn University students, uh, assembling here in Selma, simply war six, to help me with some community, uh, activities. And we want to be cleaning up certain areas. One of the main areas is the bypass, it is just criminal, it is direct criminal what is being done as relates to people just, uh, I mean, just ha, they're just throwing garbage everywhere. So I'm just welcoming, uh, those students to our city and encouraging everybody who are six who, who can avail themselves and every citizen, I'm signing my voice, are we ready?
You're being, are, are you radio and internet, Mr. Thomas, or just, or just, uh, internet?
This is going to be pre-ear, uh, broadcast at eight o'clock tonight.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm encouraging everybody on the twenty-first, meet me at, uh, the parking lot of Hellenese Baptist Church. We're going to be assembling at nine o'clock and we want to greet those Auburn University students with a warm welcome because they're, they're coming here to do, uh, some things that people need to be doing for themselves soon. Uh, I just want to encourage and get all the help that I can on that day, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
That's the courthouse or boardroom.
Uh, that's the, uh, boardroom.
Will, will there be any more businesses over there, will not? Is there a motion to?